Thank you for your patience. We are ready to begin our meeting. Today is Monday, April 18th, and I'd like to call our meeting to order. Starting with our roll call, present in the boardroom, we have members Jacobs, Lessons, Donley, Wilson, and Bellamy. Online, we have members Higgins and Holloman. We also have our superintendent online. And we have, in the boardroom, our student advisor, student advisory representative, Ellie Shaw. And who am I missing? And of course, the lovely Katie. Thank you, Katie. With that, I'd like Ms. Shaw to lead us into the pledge and do our land acknowledgement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred and ancestral lands of the Denina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of its indigenous peoples. Chenon.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. And in addition, we'd like to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and for supporting the work of the Anchorage School Board. The Board thanks its students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district. And that includes your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. So, welcome to our meeting and thank you.
Madam President, we'd like to move. We approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved. And second, that we approved the agenda as it is presented. Are there, is there any opposition to approving the agenda? Or do we need to do a voice vote because we're not all in the same? Okay, we can do this. Any opposition? Seeing none in the room or online, our agenda is approved as presented. And that brings us to item B1, our Student Advisory Board report. Ms. Shaw, when you're ready.
Okay, so SAB, or Student Advisory Board, held their last meeting of the school year on Tuesday, April 12th, at 11:15 a.m. We started our meeting by playing Person Bingo, and then we approved the agenda in last month's minutes. Then there was an ASOG, or Alaska Association of Student Government, report from our Region Four reps Maggie and Josh from Polaris. Then we heard from Andrew Ball about the Calendar Committee update, and school board member Carl Jacobs shared his monthly report. After that, we did elections, where Brooklyn Stock from Diamond was re-elected as Vice President, Marielle Corton from Diamond was re-elected as our Secretary, and Kahela Green from Family Partnership Charter School was elected as our new Public Relations Officer. We then moved into school reports where every school, middle school and high school, shared any end-of-the-year events they're doing and, you know, something that they're doing in, like, particular to their school only. And then, at the end of the meeting, we had everyone take a survey about SAB and how we can improve, what we did well, what do you want to see, et cetera. We passed out certificates to every SAB member. And lastly, we had a small officer recognition for our amazing e-Board. And sadly, our next meeting is not until September 2022, so we are taking a small break for a couple months, and that's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Shaw? Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. Another question for Ms. Shaw, but didn't want to say that it's been a privilege to be able to sit in on the SAB meetings. And congratulations to President Shaw. I know she'll be leading the group next year. I don't think I'll be allowed to repeat as the board member representative, but it has been great and highly encourage anyone to come to watch and participate in the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Shaw. Always a great report. And I hope that prom was as wonderful as we thought it would be. Thank you. All right, and that brings us to... Where is my agenda? I got it right here. Too many papers. That brings us to our goal monitoring, oh, yes, our goal monitoring report. Actually, this is our discussion, our conversation today. So, at the beginning of the month, at the first meeting of each month, we get a report from the superintendent that addresses our goals and/or guardrails. And so, that report was given to us on the 4th. It was reflective of Goal 3, which is college life and career readiness. For that goal, we, that goal reads as follows. Beginning with the freshman class of 2020, September 2020, the percentage of high school students graduating life-ready as well as college and/or career-ready will increase from a baseline to be determined this spring to 90% in the spring of 2026. The indicator we're looking at tonight and having our conversation around is attendance. As indicated in that, in the report, attendance is a strong indicator for success in college, career, as well as life. There is a direct correlation between students who attend school regularly and higher academic achievement levels. A missed school day is a lost opportunity for students to learn. ASD strives to increase the percentage of students attaining 90% or more or better attendance rate. Missing at least 10% of days in a school year for any reason, including excused and unexcused absences, is considered chronic absenteeism. So, before we start, I want to confirm that all four components of the monitoring report are present. The report clearly shows what's being monitored, the specific goal, and the indicator. The report also shows the data for the three previous reporting periods, the current reporting period, and the target reporting period. The report shows the superintendent's evaluation of performance via map, uh, performance as on track. And the report shows supporting documentation and is real clear about our next steps. With all components being in order, we are ready to begin our progress monitoring conversation. I do want to thank those of you who sent in questions. For those of you who did not yet, you may use the guide that's right in front of your monitor. But I would like to open our questions for the who, the what, the why, and then, of course, we'll end on the how. So, who wants to ask the superintendent the first question? I'm given a prize for the first question tonight. Kelly gets the prize.
I don't think there are any prizes. I think you're lying. Thank you. This is a point of clarification, because I don't truly understand. Can you please explain how excused and unexcused absences are different under our system, although they both count towards chronic absenteeism?
Dr. Bishop, can you hit a pause?
Thank you for that question. I did. Thank you. I was turning off my camera, and I just wanted to share with the audience in the boardroom, as well as those online, that my connection is better with it off. And so, when I do speak, I will not have my face. You either get one or the other. So, that's a great question, and we've really struggled with this for a long time because the goal is really to have students at school learn. And so, we want them, if you will, there's some questions that came through about their work, and we want them to make up their work when they can and actually do the tasks that will assist them in, in learning and achieving. But unexcused and excused really does go back to parent knowledge and notification to our schools. And it was very important that we have the distinction. Our schools did share with us that it was important to have this distinction and continue to have it so that communications with parents, it didn't matter, you know, no matter how you were absent, whether it's excused or unexcused, but sometimes they refer to different behaviors in children and the types of different behaviors that will be successful when they get older and go into the workforce, and that's part of this CCL, and those that are behaviors that are unsuccessful, you know, in your attendance and showing up to do the work. So, it was imperative that we have both, and some of our systems built in really speak to that. So, with the technology, if a student misses class, there is a notice, kind of what we call the robo-call, I don't know for a better word, that notifies their parent so that they'll know whether, oh, I know that they were absent today or not. And so, we still have a lot of growth to do in how we mark these down and ensure that every class, we're making sure we're keeping attendance. And then, in elementary, it changed a few years ago, morning and afternoon, just to have more data. But for the outcomes in student learning, sure, there's not a difference. But for the types of behaviors that we want to address for success, there absolutely is a difference, and it just provides a conversation point around excused or unexcused in regard to students taking initiative. I hope that helps answer it a little bit.
Did you have a follow-up?
I guess it's a follow-up. I mean, so if I, as a parent, say, my child is excused because of a doctor's appointment or because we're going on a family trip, is that, is my child, I mean, you want them to learn what they would be missing in class, but are they actually, if there is a test that's missed, is that child responsible for making that up in a way that would be different than if a parent didn't know to call and excuse their child's absence? I'm not sure if I'm asking the question correctly.
I understand. No, the child missing test, whether a parent excuses or not, that's really about the learning and the demonstration of learning. So, we'll work within that scenario. It really is dependent on past behaviors, family situations. The goal is for students to learn and be successful. And so, as far as the academic part of it, especially with assessments, like you shared in major projects, we want the ability to be there for kids to complete those tasks, if you will. However, if a student decides to, in high school, knowing that participation in some type of activity during the school day is part of the grade, and they decide to walk out or stay late at the local McDonald's down the road because they don't feel like going to the next period class, certainly, that provides a different conversation about, you know what? When you chose to be this unexcused and not have prior permission nor notification of your parent, you don't have the ability to make up these participation points. And so, it's very nuanced, if you will, but in the general sense of having the ability to make up the work, we want that to happen. Generally, in elementary schools, we try to catch kids up prior to. Sometimes teachers send, if, you know, they're going to be gone for two weeks, say, to travel back east to go to a parent's funeral or, or something like that, or grandparents, you know, or even a vacation. We, many teachers provide additional coursework that has to do with that event or that activity and count that. In high school, it comes down to really the content of what the students are learning and having the test be, let's see, shared, if you will, if they take it early. So, depending on the security of the tests and, and assessments and the, you know, the high stakes nature of them, the, the options for children would be different. But again, it goes back to the classroom, the teacher's communication, the behaviors of the child, but also the situations of the families. We take and our teachers take into account some hardships that really are, are our families' experience.
Thank you. Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. A question regarding the process, and I believe the board discussed in a previous meeting, there was a change as to how absences are put into our system. Is there an opportunity for, or at what point does an educator have an opportunity or lose the opportunity to correct a child or student not being in class for a particular day? Does that ability transfer at some point, and does that have any impact on accuracy for the data that we have?
I'm not sure of the question in regard to a teacher having an opportunity to correct it or, or things like that, but I do want to share that this is probably, data collection around attendance is a bugaboo to begin with. I think the states that actually get funding, California and Texas, in regard to, they get state funding in regard to attendance, not enrollment, and so they are very precise with, like, how to do it. But for us, we changed it a few years ago. So, in, prior to 1617, there was not consistency in the manner in which attendance was taken, yet it was a Destination 2020 goal. So, we wanted to be sure that if we're looking at attendance, we should ensure that the collection is more aligned, if you will, that we have less variance in it so that we could actually make good decisions. And so, we tightened it up a little bit, and part of that, I mentioned, was elementary really taking attendance twice a day because sometimes kids were out just, say, they got to school by 9:15 because they were late, or 9:30 because they had a morning appointment. They were marked absent all day when really they came in, but it was after it had been already entered in the computer. So, there is a certain time of day we've standardized. You know, if they come in before this time, it's a half a day or a whole day, things like that. So, we want to work with parents and students in regard to, or our teachers do, in regard to their attendance. But, you know, and, and that involves really making the stakes a little higher or finding that Goldilocks, if you will, of incentive versus, you know, the carrots and the sticks that's gonna, you know, maybe deter the behavior but also encourage the behavior. And so, to your specific, I don't know if you have an example about a teacher, but I didn't really understand your question, I guess.
No, thank you. I'll be glad to clarify, Dr. Bishop, and if this is something we need to take offline, by all means. So, if a, if a teacher realizes, whether it be a conversation with a student or some other way, that they, there was a mistake made and the student was marked absent that wasn't, is that something a teacher can correct the, the next day or later in the week? Or is that something that gets handed to an administrator for parent follow-up that may or may not occur that might impact data integrity?
Oh, that's a great question. Okay, I understand now. The, what would happen is generally at elementary schools, many times, once it's given that day, it's set in the system. So, many times, they'll set corrections at the office for the Attendance Secretary to correct. And so, our high schools specifically have administrative assistance specifically for attendance, and, and those can be corrected in communication. I'd have to get details. I'll put them in the board connect in regard to the functions of Q that can assist with that. But many times, they are missed. We have had, we struggle with this in regard to parents calling in and knowing that their kid is absent, but then the, they'll still get, the teacher will mark them absent, but they, the pre-excused, if you will, didn't get into the system yet, so they still get one of those robo-calls. That really frustrates our parents because they're saying, hey, I told you. But we do try to deal with live information, but sometimes it can't be corrected on, in real time due to whether the teacher's teaching or the office dealing with something else. But we do try to correct those when there are errors so that the data becomes correct. Now, that's a teacher error, but sometimes this, what we found over time is that our systems or different schools, we've had to schedule within the first 10 minutes do attendance or after this time. Like I said before, we've starting to standardize timing around it so that that provides more efficacy for the data. Still a struggle, though, to your point.
Other questions? Are you good, Member Jacobs? Did you have a follow-up?
No follow-ups. I have other questions, but I'll pass it on.
Hold on. Member Wilson?
Just out of curiosity, chronic attendance, is there any, I know we talk about other states, but I know repercussions in other states. Is there any follow-up or any accountability that the district has for children or families who have really chronic attendance, whose students have really chronic attendance?
Chronic absenteeism.
I'm sorry, chronic attendance, chronic absenteeism. Chronic attendance is good.
Yeah, I knew what you meant. So, that's a really good question, Member Wilson. And again, this is something that I just want to share. You know, my report says that I believe we're on track, and, and that might cause some cognitive dissonance with the board, but I want to share that for two years, we said, if you have a sniffle, a headache, a cough, please stay home. And so, we've created behaviors, and really, they continue in regard to health and safety precautions, that we've built in behaviors into our students to stay away. So, I just wanted to make this, this caveat about chronic absenteeism as of late. We, these were some of the reasons that I made some unpopular decisions early on in this September, for instance. I changed the quarantine time when we didn't have tests come back. If you remember, we wanted PCR tests, not at-home kits, because at-home kits, at the time, we wanted to know right away, and if you used at-home kits, if you had a negative, you really had to wait three days, and if you had your second negative, you're really negative. But we had a process that you had to have three to five days in between those tests to come back. And by September, if you recall, we had over 800 absences. We weren't even in school for a month, and it was killing us because of close contacts. So, I eliminated the close contacts. Then we went to quarantine procedures for understanding about the virus. And we went to PCR tests in our schools. That was a major movement, not only for our students but our teachers. There were many, many teachers who were upset that they, if they had a symptom, they had to wait for five days to come back. Because those, you know, those at-home tests and PCR tests at local testing places, you know, took a long time. So, some of the two major actions that I took this year were specifically around changing some of the attendance and getting kids and our staff back at school who severely wanted to be there. So, but prior to COVID, we also had chronic absenteeism, and so there are differences. We have worked with, again, you've heard it from earlier in the work session, a company, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, and they also have this really fantastic work around absenteeism and how to work through tiers in our system. And we had 10%, and then 20%, and then anything over 20%, 79%, you know, percent, and it was our tier three. In different schools, utilize different features for those, but you specifically asked for tier three, and those many times are meetings with families, identifying why. Everything from buying an alarm clock to having someone, a friend go to the house to help a child wake up and get to school if it's a high schooler that gets, you know, off by themselves, to really utilizing our community partners and focusing on attendance with parents as well because many of our kids, and this is interesting, I, when I, Reverend Green once talked to me about, can you instill, you have to talk to more than the kids and the parents at the same time, but we also need to get translators to them because the kids are not being truthful to the parents. You know, they're kind of, they know English and they know more school language than their parents, so they're kind of not telling truths, he said. So, that cued us into really utilizing, if we find absences for, for students of different languages, to really engage the family in educating them about what that means, what, you know, what does attending school mean for the success of their student? And, you know, prior to this time also, we had competitions and contests and, you know, they, the kids had little bands that said nine is fine, meaning that you can have up to nine, but after nine absences, we're gonna, you know, get involved and, and some consequences might happen or some extra time that you have to give. So, there's been lots of, if you will, interventions that are really crafted around leadership groups at buildings. But for severe absences, generally counselors, administrators, we do home visits. We do contracts with kids. We find that if they're struggling in the morning, changing, you know, their schedule to where they don't have a first period, I mean, there's been so many things. There's never this, you know, magic pill, if you will, that's going to make everything okay, but it's really, by the time you hit to chronic absences, it's, it's more interventions one-on-one with adults in the building with parents and kids. I know I went on for a little bit a long time, but I do want the board to know that we're in a, a different time right now, and we are regaining the trust of our kids that coming to school and engaging them, that if they come, I know if they can get themselves here for three weeks, they will be engaged with their teachers, and, and we have such wonderful classrooms that they're gonna want to be there, and they're gonna have that relationship with their teacher. But a lot of times, it is hard, and many parents have shared with me that their kids use the behaviors that we've kind of shared with them about COVID staying home to their advantage when sometimes it's not really truthful. So, we're trying to turn that around.
Okay. Dr. Bishop, I have a, just a small question, I guess. So, what, what kinds of education are we giving to parents, other than the handbook? What, what are we, how are we getting the importance of attendance? I know a couple of years ago, pre-COVID, every school had an attendance goal. I mean, I would walk into schools and see, you know, they had challenges going on. They had bulletin boards. They had, it was a big deal. It was a talk of the school. That was one of the first things out of staff mouth and kids. So, how are we, how are we navigating that now that they have these learned behaviors?
Sure. So, so that's, that's a great question, President Bellamy. And we continue to do that, and we're starting to build those back up. But it's still, at this point in time, a little counterintuitive when we're saying, if you have a cough, and, and I know the board has received several complaints. We still do have a protocol that if you are displaying symptoms, that you should stay home. We still have kind of a, a hard stance on that to keep our building safe. And so, as we move towards the new Omicron variants, where as you hear, you know, the medical experts speak that the COVID is becoming more transmissible but less severe, especially with, with, you know, the different types of mitigation that we have, that we can get back into a more regular rhythm. But at this point in time, many of those really aggressive techniques that were school-wide are the exact, it's causing cognitive dissonance with our parents and our kids because they're saying, okay, you're telling me to be here, then you're telling me to go home when I do get my kid here. So, we will regain traction with those things. I don't think that this fourth quarter is where we're going to do that. We have started with conversations with parents and kids, identifying where it is truly a behavior issue and not an illness issue. And so, we're drilling those down. But to have, you know, the banners and the parties and the rewards when we continue to operate in this COVID environment, we're really putting teachers in a catch-22, and I don't want to do that to our staff or our principals. And so, what they're noticing is patterns of children. Are they sick, are they not, calling home? It's, it's not so much as this overlay, which, you know, like you said, the banners and things, it's, it's more one-on-one with, hey, I'm noticing an academic fall. Your child's not here. They were here. Is it due to illness, or is there something I can do? We're really working on that individualized relational capacity level right now as to not provide mixed messages to our families. We want to keep, you know, our teachers safe in school. We want to keep the kids who are coming to school safe. And there's an expectation from the community that we still will address. And there's an expectation from the community that we still will address students who are COVID positive and have fun with them again. We had everything from the golden shovel that schools had school-to-school competitions, classrooms had star competitions, that if their classroom had students, you know, that had, 90% of the kids were there, 90% of the time, they got stars above their doors. And, I mean, there's just quite a bit of that celebration and discussion. And as you know, as a principal in ASD, it was just our lifeblood. But we're really in a place that we know attendance and behaviors of showing up are important. It's just that we have to be really level-headed and deliberate in how we communicate those as to not send mixed messages. So, so thank you for that. And I do want to acknowledge that, and we look to get there again, because it's fun and exciting to celebrate those types of things and encourage kids. But right now, we're in this catch-22.
So, Dr. Bishop, it's Margot again. Do you think we will be able to get a baseline? We're in a place where we really could get a good baseline data for the goal, the attendance part of the goal of our? Yeah. We're kind of going, you know, 10 steps forward and another five backwards.
Yeah. That's a great, great question. And again, these, all these goals that we have are written pre-pandemic. And so I wouldn't remove it, because it needs to stay on our mind. It's just that the actions as we move forward have to be deliberate in what is occurring in our community at that point in time. I would have loved nothing better than to get our kids back, boom, boom, the beginning of last year. But the truth is, they spent a year out of school. And we're changing those behaviors, readdressing it, but at the same time, keeping an eyeball on illness in the community. But the message from teachers about the importance of attendance, when you are capable of coming and being present and participating is an action that will have success later on, or all those larger messages that we're trying. So in regard to baseline, I think we have a five-year average, we'll kind of learn once again, you know, when we get to a place, you know, where we're encouraging kids and really, the chronic absences have a lot to do with poverty and family situations, which is a lot to do with a lot of other outcomes in our community, whether it's healthcare, you know, academic achievement. And so we can't look at anything isolated. You know, we just heard the interconnectedness with mental health and different things. So we're just going to do our best to work collectively with all our departments and identifying barriers, understanding where kids are coming from. But we don't want them continuing with, you know, eh, if I kind of don't feel like it, it's a good excuse to stay home, whether I want to, whether I feel sick or not. I can't count on my fingers and toes, the number of parents who called upset about that, that their kids are utilizing the COVID protocols to opt out. We don't want kids to opt out. And I know that when they get to school, they will be connected to their teachers. I hope that answered.
Oh, yes, it did. Thank you. Member Lessons?
Thank you. I appreciate, Dr. Bishop, your response a few minutes ago, essentially saying that, yes, we do have an MTSS, a multi-tiered system for understanding chronic absenteeism, the tier one, tier two, tier three. I don't really see that in this progress monitoring. And I feel like I, on one hand, I want to, I want to ask that in future reports, the board is presented with information about how many of our students, you know, if we've got 9,000 to 11,000 students going back to the 2016, 17 school year, you know, who are chronically absent, I do have a curiosity about how many of them are acutely chronically absent, or maybe chronically absent in a less acute manner, because then I would, I would hope that we would have an understanding of the resources that are being targeted. But I just want to ask for information, but I guess I find that salient. So I would, if that information is available, I would, I would appreciate knowing that it's being applied. I, there's a lot more data in the Equity Dashboard, which I found really eye-opening and engaging. But one of the things that I saw that is aligned in the Equity Dashboard and in, oh, slide, slide five, is that you can see that something is kind of going well, or maybe better, in our middle elementary school years. Even in these last two years, which have been horrendous with our absenteeism, those middle elementary years, students in third, fourth, maybe sometimes fifth grade, they have lower rates of chronic absenteeism than kindergarteners, first graders, or second graders, and certainly much lower rates than in middle and high school, and they tick up dramatically. So I'm wondering if there's anything that's going well, that we can identify within that middle elementary stage, that could be applied to reduce chronic absenteeism in other age, in other cohorts?
Yeah. That's a great question. And we have been, just to your first one, utilizing the PBIS for quite some time, and that's what engages, and schools utilize those, they really break down their chronic absenteeism in those leadership groups that they do, when they look at data, when they have whatever they call data meetings, things like that. So they look at academics, they look at attendance, and are they the same? And, and to your point, and not everybody is treated the same, because we have many things that show up as chronic that aren't causing a negative impact to academics, interestingly enough, whether that would be sports travel, many of our own teams are out quite a bit, depending on the travel that they take out of state. You know, we just had a wonderful choir group from West win nationals, and they, you know, were gone, you know, for quite some time from school. And, and so we, the teams at the schools look at those as to what types of intervention should be done. But we can certainly, you know, we utilize those at the school level, where it's the closest to the touch of the student and the teachers that can make the difference. And so utilizing the tiered system, it has just made sense for us. But if there's a curiosity, I can see, you know, how much work it is to get those data for you, for you as well. But we like to keep 30,000-foot view where it belongs, and then allow our schools and our teams to really dive down where they actually can affect the work. That, that's really why we, I don't really collect it at my level either. But the, the next question you had was in regard to the grade levels. And we did pose this and ask some questions around. And, and certainly these last two years, if you even look at our SEL engagement data, K-1 is struggling all over the place, whether it's through academics. Kindergarten is doing much better than first, but it's still new, and K-1 teachers are really pulling it this year. Interestingly enough, as well as, you know, the other two are the 11th and 12th. And I was with a teacher last Friday who shared some insights into 11th and 12th graders, and they're really being upset with us in regard to the lost years that they've had. And she said in, for lack of a better word, like attitude, you know, that they're, you just can't please them, and they're so angry of the rites of passage that were taken away their freshman sophomore year, that it wears on them. And so she has conversations continually with her 11th and 12th graders, and she's a student government leader for SAB, and she, we had a wonderful conversation about that. What our elementary folks tell us is that these kids had a great start with K-1, they're engaged with their teachers. And again, when you're engaged and you're getting up, upper elementary kids generally don't have to be woken up too much. They are eager to get themselves ready and get rest, you know. To your point earlier, a lot of our, our middle and high school kids are having to get up earlier, which is not their circadian rhythm, but these elementary kids are up and at them in the morning, can get dressed on themselves, self-starters, and really had a, started off their schooling on the right foot. You know, having a really solid K-1 experience, K-1, two experience even. So those were some of the ideas that, when we put it out there to principals, they shared, and they noticed that too. But that noticing is in, you know, really strong fifth and sixth grade academics that we're seeing in growth and things like math. And so we're, we're now starting to put the pieces of the data together to look at other aspects. But we're happy for it, we want to, you know, grow that. But again, not as an excuse, but kind of a realistic observation is the rough start of this year, as well as last year, in regard to our students. And I'm speaking this year as well, because even though we didn't close schools, our staffing, I mean, when, when I'm going for seven weeks straight into elementary schools to teach, that is not consistency. I loved it, I enjoyed it, I was in little people's classes, but they love their teacher. And when their teacher was out ill, that is also a disruption to learning. So not only the student absence, but adult absences is also a disruption. And we've been dealing with a virus that's keeping us out, and our protocols are as well. So to answer your question, three, four, five, they said they get themselves up, they're eager for school, and they had a great start.
Other questions? Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. So a question regarding the breakdown by, by school type on page four. The largest year-over-year decrease in attendance, overall attendance rate appears to be charter schools. I'm curious if we have any thoughts as to why that might be? And then at minimum, is it reasonable to, we had a conversation regarding transportation when we passed our budget, is it reasonable to consider this to be a data point as to what possible benefits of addressing the transportation gap? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for that question. Member Jacobs, then, transportation, I think, is a major gap when students who want to go to charters, but don't have a ride there. But I think the commitment from families to drive them has been there. So I don't, I don't think that necessarily transportation, if transportation was provided, that students would go. We did have differences. And so if you look at from one year to the next, the capturing of the data, when schools were still in online learning and in virtual learning last year, our charter schools waited and stayed. Many of our charter schools did not open when our neighborhood and other lottery schools did. They took off an extra some quarter, if you will, and sometimes even into the fourth quarter. So we had Aquarian, Rikishulam, the native charter school, I know for certain, they did not start back in January, as all the other students did. So when we were keeping high-quality attendance records for the rest of the district during that time, the charter schools who had primarily younger kids in them, they were still on, everybody defaulted to being there if they logged on or did homework, you know, or if they, you know, produced some kind of, they didn't even necessarily have to be on during the time that the teacher was live, if they could show that they logged on later and looked at the lesson. So the manner in which we took attendance last year to this year could be artificially inflated or deflated, if you will, just from the differences of what education looked like. But primarily, our charter schools last year did not start, a majority of them, until the fourth quarter. So their third quarter would look really good last year, which, which might then show a decline or, you know, or coming back to school. You know, the, the systems may not have been, you know, as accurate as our neighborhood schools, for which we really articulate a pattern and a cadence.
Did you have a follow up? Are you good?
Oh, thank you, Dr. Bishop.
Okay. Member Lessons?
This is a question that, because of, because of this presentation, it came from, from the Equity Dashboard, which you can look at year-over-year, or you can look at sort of the set of years and divided by grades. And one of the things that caught my eye is that chronic absenteeism seems more pronounced among economically disadvantaged females than economically disadvantaged males, really in that pivot point is around seventh grade. And so I'm just wondering, you know, we're thinking, if you're thinking about tiers, are we thinking about the headwinds, we use that word a lot, that are economically disadvantaged female secondary students may be facing, that are more acute than, than the headwinds that their male counterparts might be using? And if so, is there anything that we do to address them?
Absolutely. Member Lessons, and our, we have found this in data even prior to the pandemic. Our older, lower socioeconomic students, especially females, are caring for their younger siblings, and they don't start school till later. And so our high school and middle school kids, we have found this out from the data and asking the schools, when they did their data teams, they did the action research to find out, why aren't our kids? And they found that many students of lower socioeconomic support the family, because their parents are off to work, have to stay so that younger siblings get off to work, and then many times then they'll get on a city bus and get to, to school. So, yes, they are addressed even to that detail, but again, it's not at the district-wide level, because, you know, there isn't this, you know, like I said, this, this magic pill that makes everything go away, it definitely drills down to the families, family situations, you know, that we see. I mean, we have set up really our schools partnerships with other families and groups, where they go into each other's homes, and we connected them with additional supports of people who could help support getting younger kids to schools or check in on them. I know that many teachers and counselors have gone and done home visits to be able to do this. So to your answer, yes, that in the model, it is broken down, because what you do with data is you look at patterns and you look at trends. And then what it does is, Dr. Stock says this all the time, it gives us another question to answer. And then we continue to ask those questions till we find reasonable and sustainable inputs that we will to relieve some of those barriers. And that occurs at schools, because certainly a barrier, even for a certain population at one school, sometimes doesn't match that same population in another school. You know, East Anchorage poverty is more dense, and, but has more public transportation than South Anchorage poverty. And so they really drill it down to their school and their community, and the supports within their school.
Okay. So I think we can shift now to our how questions. So does anyone have a how question? And I think I'll, I'll start with, you know, we just had a great presentation with Dr. Knudsen and Ms. McClellan on the Integrated Mental Health, the Anchorage School District Integrated Mental Health Plan. And it seems to me that part, part of the complexity of the plan, based on our discussion here, here tonight, and probably just based on the data in general, is, is, you know, we have, those things have to be connected. The mental health, the trauma-informed, I mean, there's so much that goes into this. It just goes to prove how much we actually need the work to be done, connect, making, making sure all the pieces to our plan is interconnected. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up. And then that, so my question around that really does have to do with, Dr. Bishop, your perception of how, of the, how will we do this? What do you see in your brain, in your mind, as how we are going to connect, deal with the mental health and the trauma that our kids are facing or coming out of or having to deal with? And how, how do you see that impacting attendance in the, as we go forward?
That's a great question, and you really stated it. It is complex, and it's many different levels. That's a great question. And you, you really stated it. It, it is complex and it's many different levels. But as part of the data that we look at, you, you heard kind of this, we want to work on SEL, mental health behaviors, kind of barriers, core, core stressors of kids. But at the same time, we're not going to say, oh, academics isn't important because the reason that we do things is to help our kids. That's what schools are, right? We are a place where they can understand and learn complex academic information and to be successful later on in life. And so we connect this attendance piece of the data and how does it connect with how kids are in being and, you know, what, when they're littler, that's probably terrible, when they're younger, the little bitty ones, it comes out in odd behaviors. And as naughty behaviors, you might say, and as kids grow, it becomes depression and other behaviors that we don't want to see as well. So understanding and, and really having top people organizing, convene the work. Because what large school systems have done, and I've worked in them for 32 years, we, what we have done is siloed everything, like everybody has a quick fix. Oh, this is about mental health. And so then we fix up mental health and then something else goes down. If life is so simple to just put a little Band-Aid on one thing, we'd all be successful, right? But it, it, it isn't because we have so many Band-Aids we've rolled out over the years. Now we're really understanding how to work with each other, have an integrated, really from the school board to understanding how, you know, the goals integrate. You shared it eloquently, you know, just now, to our cabinet, understanding this, principals, and that we've done two major real switch in functions. Dr. Aches is a mastermind of data and he has assembled a strong team there and really built around the team of folks that we've had and provided leadership with them of understanding statistical significance and differences and so that our assumptions are challenged because sometimes we have too many of them. And then we coupled that with Dr. Knudsen and Kate McClellan, our, our hire of a behavioral mental health specialist and a school psych to lead this work, who's also an academic expert, to lead really in this overall with the chiefs and this strategic planning piece. And, and I can't say enough that we want to see success and we want to see a change right away. But the true, this race is, is a marathon. And I think you've used that before. And we want to finish this marathon race because all of our kids are going to finish that, get across that finish line with our supports. And I'm not worried about who's first or second. But, but connecting it is so important and that's part of, you, you might see it in my face when my, I'm there, like just the frustration of, of not getting this or, you know, we should have done that and this. And, and just understanding what this pandemic has done to us, what it's done to our staff, our kids and our families, and, and how we're connecting each other, connecting with each other and with those outcomes that we want to support people in moving forward because we're going to do it together. So I, I don't know what else to share other than we have the right pieces in place and we have the right people. And if we support our people from the classrooms to the schools to the district office and those before you, that the work will get done. And, and I'm looking forward to passing, like I said, the baton to the new superintendent who also gets this work.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Other final questions from any board member? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'm referring to, I think, page eight under instruction for one of the strategies, which is ensure students have opportunities to redo assignments or retake tests and quizzes. I guess more of a how question, I'm hoping Dr. Bishop could expand on what the structures and processes might look like. What, what would that opportunity look like for a student and what level of consistency would we have across ASD campuses? Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Jacobs, you've hit the nail on the head. In such a large district, that's what we work towards. And, and so it's engaging and working with our leadership in buildings, meaning teacher leaders as well. I mean, teachers are leaders. They lead a class of students, they lead five classes, six classes of students. So they, they lead through this. And, and working with students to understand, and staff rather, to understand situational awareness of capturing, you know, we, we talked to, you know, capturing a kid's heart. If they know you care, they're going to care what you know, right? And so a lot of times our, our prior punitive measures haven't guaranteed the learning because we haven't guaranteed the relational capacity that we have with our staff. And, and it could be summed up like, you know, sometimes we think kids aren't doing it because, and we actually did an action research on this at West High once when it was about failing grades and students not being in school. And, and some of the comments, I've shared this before. When we looked at the connectedness survey, the response from kids was that, yeah, you care about my academics, but they couldn't identify, only half our kids could identify someone in the school that cared about them personally, which really broke our hearts as educators. And West High took it to another level. They ended up doing an action research and, and taking a a handful of students and asking them, hey, you got this F. And then they asked the teachers, the counselors did this, why do you think these kids, you know, didn't receive good grades? And why do you think, and then they asked the kids, why didn't you get good grades? And it, it really brought the staff and students together. And so this is just an example of how we do this. We engage the people in the work. Staff comments were, you know what, they don't want to be in my class. They're always absent. They never come in for help, things like that. Like basically, they don't care. And students, when they answered why I work at night and I don't have time to do my homework, the time to get help is the same time that I have, I go to do math help because my teacher can't do it any other time so that just conflict. I don't, I'm afraid to ask my teacher a question because I don't know if I'm going to get embarrassed. When the teachers saw those things, remember Jacobs, it broke their heart. And they began to start to think about how do we connect with our children with the hearts first so that, you know, if they, they know we care, then they care what we know. And they just started making those, those simple changes. And, and that's what it is. You know, we would never tell a little toddler who's learning how to walk when they fall down, why don't you just try harder? You know, stand up and try, try harder. We know that that's absurd. But in some cases, when students don't have the advantages that other kids have, that it's almost as simple as telling them to try, like they are trying hard, but there's some other things that are amiss. And so we really engage this work at the school level to bring staff together to understand the power and the influence that they have in how they teach and how they connect with kids first. And then move to, so then what are we going to do about it? And we will have consistency checks, of course, when there's problems, you know, principals delve into it. Staff, especially in their different constructs, if it's English or science, they'll come up in their department and come up with, you know, these are going to be what we're going to do in math. And this is how we're going to operate in science so that it, they, they bring some consistency. But it's got to start with those teams and, and, and gendering those ideas with guidance about best practices. And, and then when they own it themselves, that's when the consistency comes, especially in a district our large because, you know, boy, howdy, you know, I've had to make some decisions that were top-down over the last recent years and that doesn't go over well. I mean, learning is about all of us engaging, but, but certainly the reason we collect data is because you need to be accountable. So while we engender people, we need to know what's working and what isn't, and then we reengage. It's, it's that cycle of, you know, that continuous learning cycle about really meeting these goals as well. But that's a great question and it's always one of the toughest things to do in a district our size.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Any other questions? Higgins, no hands? Not seen anymore. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. We appreciate the conversation tonight. Member Holloman, if you can hear my voice, can, we need to accept the report?
I move that we accept the Congress report, Congress monitoring report presented by the superintendent.
One second. Moved in second by Member Wilson, moved by Member Holloman, second by Member Wilson, that we accept the Go Monitoring Report for April 20, 2022. Any objections? Not seeing any. The report is approved. Is that all we need? Okay. Thank you. So now we will go back to our agenda. That brings us to item D, which is our public comment. And before, as you entered the boardroom, you would have seen a handout, blue and white handout on the table. It basically goes through the rules and decorum for the boardroom. So prior to our testimony, I'd just like to do a few reminders. So we'd like to welcome everyone to the school board's first of two opportunities for the evening for public comment. We have set aside an hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. Comments that are in excess of the first hour will be moved or heard at the end of our meeting. During public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is the public's time to speak and the board's time to listen. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through their comments. But to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. ASD conducts public meetings under Robert's Rules of Order. Those rules require the board and the public to be civil and respectful of each other's opinion, opinions and statements. There are a few requirements that are guidelines in our boardroom. One, do not attack a member's or speaker's motives. Speakers may point out what he or she believes to be a natural consequence of a board action, but may not engage in speech that personally attacks others. Please refrain from disturbing the meeting. This basically means no cheering, applause or outbursts. Unless you, unless you are testifying, you must be polite to the board and other speakers. Attendees will not be permitted to interrupt the business of the board. Consistent with our mission to educate kids for success in life, no profanity or foul language is acceptable in the boardroom. Additionally, please, there should be no sign-waving flyers or posters. So as president of the board, it is my duty to enforce these rules of civility and decorum. And as such, I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of the rules. And with that, we will start our public, our first hour of public testimony in person. I'll call your name and you can come right up to the front of the room. In person, we have Deborah Hanson. Welcome, Ms. Hanson. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name's Deborah Hanson. I'm a 40-year resident next-door neighbor of Inlet View School. I testified before you several times this past fall about Inlet View School and, and the Anchorage School District's plans to move the school. One thing we're very interested in knowing is what are the Anchorage School Board and the Anchorage School District's plans now for Inlet View School with the prospective bond failure? Currently, ASD's architect contractor is going ahead with the same plan to move the school to the south side. They are to reappear before the Urban Design Commission in June. That's one question. The next I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. Have you ever been to a meeting where you're just there for show? The meeting's just for show. They're not interested in your participation. They're not interested in your thinking about anything. They just want you to be there. That's how we have felt in the 223 days since we found out about Inlet View School's meetings. A lot of things have been done pro forma. It's meaningless. It's, the school's important to us. It's important to the neighborhood. And since we've been trying to give input, there have been no substantive changes to the plans. ASD has ignored our concerns, ignored our letters, ignored our testimony, ignored basically everything we've done. And if you think about it, we submitted a letter to ASD with 107 people signed that we'd gotten just about a week. If you think about how many people we've contacted since then, and think about just me, who've lived in Anchorage for 40 years, worked here, volunteered, go to school, how many people I know personally, plus all the other people? And you think about it and you can understand why it's possible that the bond's going to be defeated. We urge you to listen to the neighborhood. Who do the schools belong to? Do they belong to ASD? They, not only ASD, do they belong only to the teachers? Do they belong only to the students? Do they belong only to the parents? They belong to the whole community, all of those people, including the people who live around the school and use the school. We've used that school for 40 years. We really would like you to listen to us. It's important. We're part of the community. We're all part of the community. We all make it successful. The current Inlet View School was designed to meet all the minimum quality standards. For $30 to $40 million, we should get an excellent school. Anyway, please direct it to
You still have, you still have some time.
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay. Anyway, please direct it to stay where it is and the best location for the kids and for the community. Again, we would really like to know what your plans are for the Inlet View School. Thank you for listening to me. Thanks for the public testimony. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Okay, next we have Martin Hanson, telephonically. Mr. Hanson, can you hear me? Star six to unmute. Star six, Mr. Hanson, can you hear me? We can see that he's there, but he can't unmute. So I'll come, I'll circle back. I'll try to circle back to you. In person, we have Ben Elbow. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Ben Elbow. I'm the father of two children within the Anchorage School District. I've been a teacher with ASD for 18 wonderful years. Two weeks ago, you heard testimony regarding the inequities that occur when calculating the PTR in schools with dual programs. You learned that at Rogers Park, neighborhood classrooms have more students, have more economically disadvantaged students, and have far fewer students who meet district benchmarks when compared to their highly gifted counterparts. You learned that when the district calculates the PTR classroom, PTR for classrooms, there's a structural inequity in schools with dual programs and an equity that puts our neighborhood programs at a significant disadvantage. I'm here tonight to continue this conversation. If you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. It was a common bumper sticker I saw growing up. And when it comes to neighborhood programs and special programs within the Anchorage School District, if you want to know one face of the problem, you're looking at it. It's me. My younger daughter is a second grader this year. She went to kindergarten and first grade at Rogers Park. It's our neighborhood school. It's also where my wife and I both teach. Four days before school started this past year, we accepted a spot for my daughter at Aquarian Charter School. It was a gut-wrenching decision over which my wife and I agonized. Despite the fact that her teacher and the staff at Aquarian have been excellent, as are the staff at Rogers Park, it's still a decision that I second guess. Why am I driving my daughter across town every morning only to drive back across town to teach at the school that's three minutes from my house? It's largely because the neighborhood program at Rogers Park continually and systematically gets stuck with the fuzzy end of the lollipop. Last August, five days before students showed up, Rogers Park lost a neighborhood primary teaching position, thus forcing a last-minute shuffle of class lists and teaching assignments. Next fall, we're slated to lose two more neighborhood classroom teaching positions, while the HG program will not see a reduction in teaching staff. At the April 4th school board meeting, when discussing the inequities of PTR allocations, school district administration admitted that the last-minute shuffling of classroom teacher positions is disruptive. What does disruptive look like? It's a teacher with experience and mastery in specific grade level content and curriculum being told at the 11th hour that they'll be teaching a different grade level. It's a first-year teacher moving buildings and grade levels the weekend before students arrive. It's fitting 33 neighborhood students into a classroom when the same grade classroom down the hall in the HG program has half as many students. It's next year's Rogers Park neighborhood teachers planning to have to teach something like four different combo classes, a practice ASD administration described as particularly worthy of avoiding at the April 4th meeting. This disruption occurs disproportionately at neighborhood schools. It also drives involved and engaged families like mine out of neighborhood programs. It also drives involved and engaged families like mine out of neighborhood programs. Our neighborhood programs need more stability. Until PTR allocations impact special programs and neighborhood programs equitably, expect more instability and more families like mine to flee our struggling neighborhood programs, thus exacerbating an already problematic situation that can't be solved with a bumper sticker. We appreciate the time this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next, in person, we have Mitchell Cullum. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Mitch Cullum. I am an adjacent neighbor to Inlet View Elementary School. I am also one of the South Edition Community Council-appointed Building Design Committee members and a father of a future student. As you have probably concluded by now, the ASD bond has failed to secure majority Anchorage voter approval. I came before the school board several times back in October and November of last year and asked you to address the problematic and suboptimal Inlet View elementary design that was being advanced for inclusion on the April 5th bond. I expressed concern that failure to correct the divisive, suboptimal design could lead to the bond's failure in April. Well, that's exactly what happened. Some of you engaged with myself and other concerned neighbors to learn more about the issues. This was recognized and appreciated. But unfortunately, all of you, with the exception of Member Donnelly, voted just two months ago to sign off on this suboptimal 65% design. I want to point out that both myself and the other South Edition Community Council-appointed BDC member were excluded from any communications or invitations to join the other BDC members that appeared before you at the February board meeting prior to your vote on the 65% design. As it stands today, the design for Inlet View's replacement has failed to receive the required approval of the Urban Design Commission and its replacement funding has failed voter approval. I request that you, the Anchorage School Board members, utilize a motion for reconsideration or other parliamentary procedure to remove your approval of the currently advanced design that has failed both voter approval and the required Urban Design Commission approval. I also ask that you direct ASD's Capital Projects team to withdraw the current design application before the Urban Design Commission and direct ASD's Capital Project team to develop a replacement design that puts the school on the north end of the lot. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and I hope that we can all work collaboratively together to see that Inlet View gets a replacement that can receive majority Anchorage voter approval and unanimous Urban Design Commission approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll go back to the phone. Mr. Martin Hanson, can you hear me? Star six to unmute. We can see you, Mr. Hanson, but we cannot hear you. You might want to hang up and call back in again, and I'll come back to you. Thank you. Next, telephonically, Sarah Stone. Is Sarah online? She's not on the line. What, okay, in person, Hans Thompson. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Hello again. My name is Hans Thompson. I came to you in November and December, I believe, to talk about the SRO funding. You passed the funding for the SRO program, and it appears that through the mayor's budget revision that this $2.3 million that was passed for the SRO program is being used for discretionary overtime for APD. So what I was saying before in November, December, that could not be really evaluated, given that there's never been transparency in the program, it's now showing that, yes, the mayor wants to use this $2.3 million, he's called it $2.4 million, to provide discretionary funding for overtime for APD. I don't think that you would ever have the opportunity to provide discretionary funding for ASD supervisors, like principals, to provide overtime funding for their teachers. So I would ask you again to really consider this program if you want to be paying through Anchorage Police Department for their overtime funding. Yeah, I guess we'll just end it there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Hanson, we're back to you. Star six to unmute. Still nothing. So let's go to Kaia Colton-Born. I'm sorry if I've mispronounced. Kaia, can you hear me? Star six to unmute.
Good evening. My name is Kaia Colton-Born. My name is Kaia Colton-Born, the neighborhood sixth-grade teacher at Rogers Park Elementary and a parent of two kids that attend the Rogers Park Neighborhood School. First, I want to thank and acknowledge the work that you've been doing to select our new superintendent, as well as advocating for House Bill 220, 272, 273, as well as the Alaska REED Act. I know that you have been busy. I'm asking that you adjust the PTR calculation to match the enrollment of each program at Rogers Park. As stated previously by the administration, this process of displacing teachers is very disruptive, and they already have a plan in place of having the 20 holdbacks in order to make adjustments in the fall. Then, what was stated next was that 95% of those holdbacks are put back into neighborhood schools that hold specialized programs. We can concur from this that calculating the PTR differently might prove to be less disruptive to our neighborhood programs, and the need for holdbacks and displacements can be readjusted now. This process isn't over and can be corrected now. Secondly, to address the specific enrollment numbers mentioned in the last meeting, it was presented that overall enrollment is divided by 27, which is the average PTR across elementary, again raging from our low-end at primary to the upper-end at intermediate. Currently, if we were to correct the PTR for our specific programs, the average class size would be 24 on the neighborhood side and 16 on the highly gifted side. As stated previously, this initial calculation is done with the number of, the number 27 to provide a little bit of room. This is not providing a little bit of room. There's no room on the neighborhood side. With the removal of two teachers on our neighborhood side, this puts our low average at 27 kids per class and our high average at 32 kids per class. This also means multiple combination classrooms that have minimally 27 kids in each one, split between two grade levels. Again, please consider adjusting the PTR to reflect the enrollment of each program. Please advocate for our neighborhood programs as a first choice to families and to be proud that we have additional lottery and qualification programs available as well. When recognizing the diversity of our district, please advocate for all the programs we offer. Support all our families, the ones that choose to stay in their neighborhood, the ones that don't have the choice as well, as well as the ones that have the ability and flexibility to choose and transport their children to schools that are farther away. Please support our teachers, who are dedicated to their neighborhood programs, even though it's becoming more and more enticing to transfer to a lottery or qualification school, leaving again our neighborhood program to have less experienced teachers than them with higher needs of students. I've taught at quite a few neighborhood schools, and each one is unique in the area, as well as a cross-section of the diverse population of Anchorage. Again, I ask that you adjust the PTR calculation for Rogers Park Elementary. One program does not need to lose flexibility.
Thank you. Let's go back to Sarah Stone. Can you hear, can you hear me, Sarah? Star six to unmute.
Yes. Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I apologize. Hello, my name is Sarah Stone. I'm here to advocate for our district's neighborhood programs. After 19 years of teaching in neighborhood classrooms, I transferred in 2019 to Rogers Park, where I currently teach a K-1 class in the highly gifted program. I transferred primarily to be at my neighborhood school, where my husband Ben, who spoke earlier, teaches, and my two daughters, in 2019, attended. The reason I continue teaching in HG is because it affords me a level of stability and autonomy that I didn't have in the neighborhood classroom. As an HG teacher, I'm far less likely to be shifting grade levels and changing curriculum as the school year begins. This means that I can gain a level of mastery in the subjects I teach. I know weak spots in the material, and I know where students tend to struggle. I know what's redundant. This type of mastery is a gift to my students. How often have you heard a parent request that their child be put into a class with a brand-new teacher? This stability also means that I'm less stressed and more satisfied with my position, which trickles into my life and teaching in ways that cannot be measured. Stability appeals to teachers, parents, and students alike. Another issue facing neighborhood teachers is being placed last minute into multi-age classrooms. Principals create these classes out of necessity as they seek to balance class sizes school-wide with fewer teachers. But the struggle in teaching them is real. With grade-level-specific curriculum across core subjects, a multi-age teacher has two math programs, two reading programs, two, two, two. The multi-age model can be hugely beneficial when it's intentionally used as part of a school philosophy, but its effectiveness is lost when classes are created out of necessity instead of pedagogical theory. Research has shown again and again that the classroom teacher has the greatest impact on student success. As a district, we can't expect our teachers to do their best when the rug is literally swept out from under them days before the year begins, or sometimes a few weeks into the school year. Every year, non-neighborhood programs and their teachers benefit from knowing what grade level they'll teach, the number of students they need to plan for, the space they'll be setting up in. Neighborhood teachers should be afforded that opportunity as well, and too often they're not. With PTR allotments, Rogers Park recently lost two neighborhood teachers. We lost teachers last year, too. And then we hired new teachers at the beginning of this year. We may well get the chance to rehire our two-lost neighborhood positions this upcoming fall, but why the roller coaster before then? Why the stress of displacement, packing up of classrooms, the moving spaces and reshuffling? You've heard and read testimony tonight and two weeks ago about the inequities and the way the PTR is determined for Rogers Park Neighborhood Program. And in talking with district administrators, I've heard that determining the PTR is complicated and that there are gray areas. But what I really want to hear from the district loud and clear is that in this particular instance, there's nothing gray. The PTR for Rogers Park's Neighborhood Program should be determined without regard to...
Thank you very much, Ms. Stone. And I think that concludes our public comment. I'd just like to mention that you may find written public comments attached to the agenda that's online. That moves us now to our consent agenda. Member Holloman, can you hear me?
I'd like to move the consent agenda as listed on the main agenda.
It's in second. It's been moved. And second to approve the consent agenda, consisting of several items. The regular school board minutes of January 4th, ASD Memorandum 98 for Personnel Report, ASD Memorandum 99, Rogers Park and Taku for Award of Contract, ASD Memorandum 107, 108. 107 is the Award of Contract for Data Storage and Camera Devices and Cameras Servers. Memorandum 108, Network Equipment. And Memorandum 117, Approval of a Superintendent Contract for Dr. Jared Bryant. It's been moved in second to approve. Any discussion? Do we have to do a voice? We do have to do a voice vote. Or you can vote if you got your... No, we have to do a voice vote because we're not all in the same... Okay. Member Lessons? Yes. Member Wilson? Yes. Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
President Meloni?
Yes.
And the consent to agenda, waiting for it to come up. Sorry. There it is. And that motion, motion to approve the agenda passes. Seven yays, no nays. Thank you. That brings us now to, we do not have any action items. So that brings us to F. Those are our non-action items that will move up to action items at our next meeting. We have no additional public comment that I can, that I can see. No one else signed up, right, Katie? Okay. So that brings us to our superintendent update. Dr. Bishop?
All right. Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to go off camera so that I have better reception. All right. So thank you for the update. I just have a few things. Very exciting this week. We have guests from Ford Next Generation Learning, and it's, they work internationally on community-connected learning. And I know Member Wilson has a personal interest in this with our partnerships in the community and workforce. And what this group really does is facilitate community engagement events with us to really gain insight into the community-based assessment of what's possible within, you know, our partners, our employers, different businesses right here in Anchorage. And the events are being conducted to identify ways to build bridges, of course, between high schools and opportunities for students to be successful after graduation, which, you know, is right in line with CCL. And the community partners, our employers and agencies have received invitations to three engagements. So I'm just going to share the dates, but they'll also be on our website to look at. So on April 20th, we have work during the day at the Ed Center for Agencies and Community Partners in support. We also have on that same day, from 3:00 to 4:00, at the Education Center, for partners offering education opportunities in various fields. And then at Betty Davis East Anchorage High School, in the library annex, we have for partners who want to bridge high school to post-secondary, so secondary to post-secondary education. Really looking forward to these. Tonight, there are some members in the audience. I believe Scott Palmer is there, and he's a community coach and project lead. Lisa Olesky is an implementation coach. And again, once we get this baseline data about our community, they, these folks will help us and coach us to learn how to better utilize what we already have. And again, it's kind of this theme of, you know, more money isn't going to be put in to keep, you know, an education. We really, how do we work with what we have? And then also, I don't think Steve Pinning is here. He's a coach, but Donna Woods, I believe, should be here already in the audience. We really look forward to engaging our community, having this assessment done, bringing back ideas about our workforce, our opportunities for kids, how we begin a path of really getting more and more kids doing internships and things like that. So that is my first update. I would like to transition to a different subject that, as I wanted to share with the board, but it just weighs on us all, that sadly, the baggage teacher, Jonathan Carrasco, he did pass away unexpectedly last week, and that was, the board was notified. But I just wanted to share, he was a wonderful language arts teacher for many, many years. He taught at both Clark and Baggage. He loved his students and was known as a teacher who opened his room up at lunch after school, especially for students who had trouble fitting in with their peers. He was truly beloved by the staffs and students. Carrasco's family shared with us... Carrasco's family shared with us and wanted us to share this with you that he did pass away quickly and peacefully from natural causes. And our thoughts are with him and his family during this very difficult time. So I wanted to share that update with the board. He'll be missed. As, as we do with students or staff, we put additional supports at the school to really help our people through this. Also, the last topic I do want to share is just about graduation. And the board's getting quite a bit of, you know, interest from, from parents about graduation and tickets. And we do have some information and just sharing this with all of our families. But we have moved the graduation, because we cannot use the Sullivan Arena, which was a larger venue, to the Alaska Airlines Center. And each family will have six tickets to distribute. And they'll get their tickets at their graduation practice. And we received feedback about why the number of tickets. And so I wanted to share tonight, as well as with the board, that given the space in the Alaska Airlines Center, although it has many more, almost twice the amount for tickets that we're giving, it really did limit the seats to about 2,200 when you take in the different areas, number one, that are behind the stage so they wouldn't be able to view the graduates, as well as for orchestras, bands, staff, things like that. Understanding that most of our classes are about 300 on the mean. The secondary ed department selected six tickets with the principals to really have a change in practice on, on how we move to graduation and the expectations. We do know, and we're going to encourage families that don't use the six tickets, to share them. And as always, when we have families with particular situations and unique family situations, that they will speak with their graduation coach, their teachers, of course, the principals. And we're going to try to work with our families individually to fix those individual circumstances that they just need more tickets. But moving to a time of having six specific guests with tickets will allow us to have safe, timely, on-time graduations where we can have them in the Alaska Airlines Center. And someday, perhaps, they might be back, moved back to the Sullivan at a time that can be more open events. But at this time, if there's any questions, certainly secondary can, can assist with that or you can email them to me and I can share. But those were the major topics. I do want to just end on my thanks to Bartlett, again, administration. This was also something in notice last week that you were notified of, of just their tremendous work and supportive, their students-in-love or their students of intercepting, as we shared in public, a gun on campus. It did not come into the school due to the swift action of those three administrators who addressed the student and noticed that the student was armed. And I can't say enough about their bravery, about their care for staff and students in their buildings. And tremendously, we are tremendously grateful to Sean Prince and his team there at Bartlett for the safety of staff and students at that school. With that, Madam President, I'm finished my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bishop. Question for Dr. Bishop? Y'all don't have any questions? Okay. All right. All right, Dr. Bishop, I'm not seeing any questions. And thank you for commemorating the teacher that we lost this week. I had planned to do a moment of silence. And, and it actually, I don't know what my note, I lost my little notes, my sticky note. But thank you for that. And our hearts are with his family as well. Yes?
I do have a question, actually. If I can go back one step, may I still?
Sure.
Okay, great. We heard testimony tonight and two weeks ago about the likelihood that Rogers Park Neighborhood Program will see an increase in the number of split-level classes. And one thing that I would like to have a better understanding is, do we have data on student outcomes from split-level courses, split-level classes versus, I don't know what you call it, a standard-grade level class that would suggest that it is, it may be or may not be in a student's best interest to be in a split-level class when it comes to allocating PTR? Maybe that's a big data request that should be more of an RFI.
It does sound like an RFI, but I'll, I'll let the superintendent speak to it, your request.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. At this time, we do not have those data readily available, and we would look into it. And if, you know, certainly, this isn't about wanting to do combo classes or split-level classes. And I would, if we're gathering the data, my understanding is that you would want to do something about it. And we would definitely then need to probably find about 70 additional teachers in our budget. We have multi-grade classrooms. And again, it is true that there is definitely less flexibility in schools with special programs. It, it, it happens. And, and we have over half of our elementary schools with special programs. And so if you do an RFI, we can look at those data year after year. It would be a big ask because we would look at trend data. But, I mean, it certainly could be done.
May I have a quick follow-up?
Sure. Well, that seems sort of pertinent to share with legislators as they consider, you know, the base student allocation and how, how our schools are funded. But if I'm hearing you correctly, it would, we would need about 70 additional teachers to compensate for the number of classes that are split-level classes across the district?
Or would set dual enrollment schools?
I, I would have to just gather the data, but it is a common phenomenon, if you will, in our school district. Some teachers and some schools believe, they're called multi-age, so they specifically have multi-age classes. But the combo classes are difficult, as we shared. And the, it, it's difficult. I would say that there's, if you look at student data, there's probably higher priorities for you of why students aren't successful than split-level classes. But are they difficult? Absolutely. And I believe Member Donley will share that he has tried to advocate for teachers who, who teach split-level classes in regard to additional pay and things like that. But I, I would say that there's probably higher priorities for outcomes, you know, to share with legislature as well. But it, it does go back to funding and the amount and how we've organized our schools and valued this choice, but yet have neighborhood sizes as well. Of the holdback teachers, they weren't assigned because they weren't specifically in a PTR. We can share that of the 2018, maybe 19 have been in elementary alone, simply in schools that have specialized programs. So Dr. Stock, if you'd like to, to comment on that? But the ask was about, you know, Rogers Park had 507 students in FY '20, and now they're having 406. And so, you know, the three-teacher difference of what was shared tonight might be in line with those numbers. It's just very difficult when you have a specialized program in your school.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
Dr. Stock, would you like to comment on that?
Sure. One additional thing, everything that Dr. Bishop just shared is certainly spot on. The other thing I would add is, it's not just specialized programs that create this sort of difficulty, but small schools in general create this. And so, you know, across the country, you know, I was in a district as superintendent. We were building a new elementary school every two years. But we never built one that wasn't 400 to 500 students in size. And what happens with a 500-student school is you have the capacity to shrink and absorb classes by avoiding combination classes, and you have a lot more flexibility. When you have smaller neighborhood schools with one, two, or even sometimes three sections, but two-section schools per grade level, your opportunities to avoid a combo class just, they go way down. And it's not just the specialized school of programs, but it's also the size of the schools, period, that also contribute to that.
Okay, I saw Member Donley's hand.
Thank you. The public testimony indicated that there'd be a combination class at Rogers Park that had 27 students in one grade and 27 students in another grade in the same class. You wouldn't do that. We wouldn't have that, would we? The goal is to still maintain normal class size, even with the combination classes, isn't it?
Member Donley, that's a great question. 27 is actually, for lack of a better word, normal class size, depending on the grade level. Yeah. So, you know, primary, you, you certainly want, you, you know, once the staffing is assigned to schools and some of the shifts are made, you really do look at, our teachers want to keep the primary smallers, to, to your point. And the intermediate sometimes goes over 30 students a classroom. So we'll, we'll really just have to, again, look at this because at this point, I think to the primary question that Member Lessons brought up, you know, the why we have to do this. We, for many years, we would never move teachers after school started or, you know, have, we would just leave them for another year and then the next year it would be adjusted. That's what we did this year. We didn't remove anyone, you know. Even though Rogers Park came under, they're kind of catching up with that additional staff member. Because of the pandemic year, you know, we had the funds. But with less flexibility in our revenue also becomes, you know, really, the teachers will follow where the students enroll, which does leave then smaller schools, schools sometimes. You can consider the one side of, you know, Rogers Park Neighborhood being a smaller school. And consequently, we, we heard tonight what happens is then, people then don't choose that school, and it even exasperates that because they'll go somewhere else. I wish we had revenue to fix all of these to have more appropriate class sizes. But until students register, they sit in the courses. I mean, you know, last year to this year, it's, you know, the 2,000 kids that we thought would come back didn't. We've been holding those teachers and didn't adjust classes.
Thank you for acknowledging that I had advocated in the collective bargaining process that the district be allowed to more fully compensate the teachers that are forced to teach these combination classes because of the great additional duties that are imposed on them. What is our current limit for doing that? We can do some of that, right, but we're limited?
I, I would have to research and make sure anything I say concurs with our collective bargaining agreement, but we can get back with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That, that board connect would be fine if we could. We could do that. Other questions from the board? Seeing no hands online? Seeing no hands in the room? That brings us to item-- Oh, Jay, we're there already. School board and administration comments. So let's start online with our comments tonight. Who did I lose? So, Member Holloman, do you have any comments? I'll take that as a no. Go to Member Wilson. Oh, there he is. Try again, Andy, try again.
Okay, is this clear? Is it coming through clearly?
That's better.
Okay. Not too many comments other than I'm surprised we did get through a meeting without a lot said about the selection of a new superintendent. I did want to speak, you know, we did get some reaction from people that did not feel heard. Speaking for myself, although I think a lot of board members would agree, we saw positive aspects in all of the candidates that were presented. Unfortunately, we just got to choose one. We really did hear the community and hear the different requests. Choosing one person to fulfill all that was extremely difficult. But I do want to thank the public for a lot of input and concern about it. And I hope things go forward really well.
Thank you, Member Holloman. Now, Member Wilson.
I will not repeat what Member Holloman said, but I will echo his sentiments. And I'm excited about working with the new superintendent. So I also wanted to recognize the month, this April is the month of the military child. It is a time to honor the sacrifices made by military families worldwide with an emphasis on the experience of the dependent children of military members serving at home and overseas. And I'm excited to have the opportunity to tour the youth programs on Jay Bear next week. So I'll report back.
Thank you. Ms. Shaw, do you have any comments, closing comments?
Yeah, just about the superintendent. I attended the student panel at South, and I know all about 20 students in there. We all favor Dr. Bryant. So from my opinion, the community was being heard. You know, it wasn't unfair in any way because, you know, we thought we wanted him and, you know, we got him. So I'm also excited to work with him at a student level.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Member Lessons?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to share a study that came across one of, one of the emails on my, on my computer. Infants born during the pandemic are vocalizing a lot less right now. They're not doing as much verbal turn-taking, which is really critical for language development. And it's especially true for the poorest children. And so the researchers are flagging this as an issue to think about for the long term, that education leaders need to partner with local early childhood educators and parents to provide more language enrichment, to really get them ready. So, you know, we have our goals for 2026. That's about when we're going to start seeing these babies. So the pandemic is not going to go away. It's going to be something that's with us. So I just wanted to flag that. We're not doing a whole lot with early childhood that early, but I think it's relevant.
Yeah. Thank you. And if you would, wouldn't mind sharing that, that would be great. Thank you. Member Donley, final comment?
Thank you. So last year, the National Association School Boards sent a letter to the Department of Justice. And that became very controversial and led to the Department of Justice creating a task force that, among other things, was investigating misbehavior of parents at school board meetings. Members of the community reached out to me, expressing concern about that event and the circumstances surrounding it. And I really felt it was appropriate that the board take a position on that event and the circumstances surrounding it. And I greatly appreciate the leeway that the Governance Committee Chair allowed in having the Governance Committee examine a proposed resolution I wrote at several meetings. But unfortunately, the committee voted not to move it forward to the full board. I do believe it would be appropriate for the board to take a position on this since we, through the Alaska Association of School Boards, are members of the National Association. It has become a national issue, actually has led to 19 state school board associations pulling out of the National Association of School Boards. That's how significant and serious it is. And many in the community have asked us as a board to take a position on it. So I'm sorry, we're not going to be able to do that. And I'll post it on one of my websites so folks can read it.
Thank you, Member Donley. And Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick notes. I wanted to first express appreciation for those who took time to write in and testify tonight. And then I'll echo Vice President Holloman's appreciation for those who engaged in the superintendent search process. I know I was looking through data for the hundreds of individuals who filled out impression forms or surveys, emails that sent in, that were sent in, phone calls that were had. So a lot of public involvement, a lot of input, and I think it was a really well-done process. I do want to express appreciation for Katie and you, Madam President, for helping spearhead and facilitate that. I know a lot of long hours and days went into that, and so thank you. Wanted to express appreciation for our educators. I know it's an especially busy time of year with standardized testing, the push towards graduate-- graduate, graduation and the end of the school year. I know that we heard from educators who were marched tired months ago, so I can only imagine. So thank you. Lastly, did want to flag that we have the Finance Committee meeting, I think our last committee meeting prior to reorganization on the 27th of June. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Going last, but not least, first I'll go to Dr. Bishop. Let's go to Dr. Bishop. Do you have any closing comments? Dr. Bishop?
No, Madam President. Thank you for the opportunity. I always speak too much during...
Thank you. I would like to just share, again, our condolences to the Carrasco family. Jonathan really was a great teacher. He will be missed. I'd also like to share thoughts for Low Crawford, who passed away this week as well. She has been a friend of education forever. And her passing will leave a void in the community when it comes to celebrating all of our cultures, building bridges between people and cultures. She really will be missed. So our thoughts are with her family. Couple of reminders for the board. Our board retreat is June 10th and 11th. I think I gave you that date, but if not, write that down, please. Let's see, we need some more, we need board members to sign up for some more graduation activities, celebrations. Katie gave it to me, and I forgot to get it to you to sign up. So on your way out, that's your, that's your exit ticket. Sign up for something on this sheet. And then the health fair that we are, that is, the board is sponsoring, working with Communications to do is April 30th. What day is that? That's a Saturday. Okay. 11 to 2 at the Mountain View Library. We will need board members to sign up for that as well. I just wanted to thank the staff, everybody in this building, especially the superintendent, Dr. Stock. You guys were awesome with helping us facilitate the site visit, helping us to do, oh, and IT, we cannot have, where is IT? Thank you, thank you, thank you. We did amazing work. That was a huge project. It took everybody, and I, I cannot tell you how much I appreciate the support and all the time, because it was a time-intensive but a very worthwhile experience. So thank you guys for that. And then, let's see, I think that's the... Yeah, I think that's it for Margot. What about our admin gallery? Would anyone over there like to say anything? I see they're going, no, no. Well, we appreciate you. We appreciate the work that you do. And with that, seeing no more comments. Oh, I do have one more. And I, I don't know, she's sitting right here next to me. We did, you know, just one of the things we, the board did was to thank, you know, people who helped us with the transition, all the school visits, you know, all the, the IT. We, we, we wanted to thank people. And the person who was the glue holding it all together is Katie. So we wanted to thank Katie. It was a team effort, but you were, you, you don't know how amazing you are. It took somebody other than me to make sure all the pieces were going forward. So I thank you for that. Thank you, thank you. And with that, we may now adjourn. Can I get a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Moving second to adjourn. Any...